I'd like to call to order the committee to hold for Tuesday, September 9th, 2014. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Schron. Mr. Schron is absent at the moment. Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Mr. Hairston? Mr. Hairston is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon? Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Germana?
Stuck in traffic on his way.
Thank you. And Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
And Ms. Conley?
Here.
There is a quorum.
All right, thank you. Item three, is there any public comment related to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there is none.
All right. We're going to go on to item four. Items refer to the committee. And I understand you're going to just read these and we'll discuss them. So do you want to read item A?
Resolution number 2014-0206. A resolution amending resolution number 2014-0052 dated February 25th, 2014, which expressed support for the Cleveland 2016 Host Committee Incorporated's efforts to secure a national presidential convention in Cleveland in 2016 to allow the use of certain county facilities on a rent-free basis as set forth in a county service agreement with Cleveland 2016 Host Committee Incorporated and SMG and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. Please let the record reflect that council members Jones, Hairston, and Simon are now in attendance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone to address this item? Item 2014-0206. Now, you're going to be as good as they were in '24 and '36. I understand in '36, Republicans had elephants marching down Yucca Avenue. Oh, sorry. I mean, if they're friendly and taking care of elephants, it's okay. But anyway, whenever I get a chance, I guess there's some great pictures in the Cleveland Public Library of the past, the two Republican conventions when they were here before in '24 and '36.
Yeah, we actually, first of all, good afternoon and thanks for your time. John Penny, on behalf of the Cleveland 2016 Host Committee, I'm the General Counsel, Secretary and Treasurer of the organization. I last appeared in front of you when we were debating whether we could host both the Republican and the Democrat. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, but we were successful in securing the Republican Convention. There are some amazing photographs, and actually, we just learned that the Western Reserve Historical Society actually has an original of the 1936 bid. And they are going to be doing a display of all of the documents that they hold from the 1936 event. And that includes one of the original programs and as well as the actual bid itself, so...
That was Wilkie, right? I don't know who ran with Wilkie.
Yeah.
Brady should know. Who ran with Wilkie? Do you remember?
Yeah, actually, it wasn't Wilkie.
Wasn't?
No. Wilkie was, yeah. Wilkie was 40. It was the governor of Cleveland.
Oh, it was Landon.
Landon?
Yeah.
He's like the guy that ran most? Alf Landon or somebody? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
We'll be on GIP. Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon again. And first of all, I do want to thank the county for its incredible support in this effort. I will just say that the speed at which we had to move was unbelievable. And the staff, the county executive, as well as the county council, worked with us through the evenings, sometimes very late, in making all this happen. I want to thank the law department, in particular Majid and Joe have just been amazing. Just, there's a lot of moving parts to this. They've been extremely cooperative, and the county's just been an incredible partner. Matt Carroll has just been tremendous, and we have nothing but amazing things to say about the county's cooperation and partnership in this effort. And I'm just pleased to have secured, helped secure a victory along with a number of other key organizations in town. And we're really excited about what's going to happen in 2016, and the county's just been a tremendous partner. So in addition to the support that was expressed in the prior resolution, we have proposed a county service agreement. We're entering into agreements with a number of organizations, agencies, and it includes the city, the state. We'll have cooperation agreements with a number of the transportation authorities. We have license agreements with Progressive Field, as well as Quicken Loans Arena. And this agreement is critical in one particular area because it covers the convention center, which is a key component of our bid. Currently, it is probably the primary option to be used as the media center to house 15,000 credential media, who will be in town for probably a three-to-four week period. We will, we will basically build out that facility to house all of the media, as well as a number of broadcasters, radio and otherwise. There will be bloggers, there will be radio station hosts. So, and we also use the Global Center extensively. And it's a tremendous option. We'll set up a secure shuttle route from the queue directly to the convention center. And it's a state-of-the-art building, and really provides an incredible option for us to house the media, which is a key component of the convention. If the media are not happy with their space, they're not going to report good things about their experience, particularly about the city. So it's a primary objective for us to provide them with state-of-the-art world-class facility, and we think the convention center is that facility. So, we haven't decided the exact location of the media center. It is, in my opinion, the number-one option. An alternative option is to convert the Gateway East parking garage, to convert about 230,000 square feet of that into a media center. We worked closely with Geis Companies to develop a design-build-fit plan for that. It is an option on the table, but we should be in a position to identify the exact location in the first quarter of '15. And we expect it would be the convention center. So, that is a key component of the county service agreement, the contract that's proposed in front of you. There are some other assets that we do need to properly put on the convention, it's addressed in the agreement. But the county's cooperation has just been tremendous. We've worked also very closely with SMG, the operator, who's just been another tremendous partner in this process. We, as a host committee, will work closely with them if it is used as a media center to make sure that we enter into what are called media and user agreements and other agreements that allow SMG, not the host committee, to recover all their costs incurred in connection with the facility's usage as the media center.
I just have some general questions.
Please.
I know you've worked this out, you know, just for the public or people listening now. These are existing buildings that we own, so we're not going to be paying rent for them. And the Whitlatch Building you took out, right?
The Whitlatch Building, as I understand it, is an option if it is...
An option, but like if we got to stay on the meantime or something, we would just supply you some space somewhere else.
To the extent it's available, yes.
Right, and then would we have to pay for that? I mean, I'm concerned about how much, I don't have a problem with stuff that we own and we're not using, so you can use, but how much do we have to pay out? That's what I'm wondering about.
We, yeah, we wouldn't expect the county to pay anything out.
Okay. So like if they need, if the Whitlatch Building is not available, we can give them some space someplace else, but we're not going to have to go into the marketplace and rent space for them, pay for it, right?
That's correct. We would not ask the county to do that.
And so like at the Global Center, that space that we own, and you're just going to use it, and you're going to leave it, like, put it back like it was?
Precisely.
Okay, so we don't have to like make repairs and do all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, the agreement covers the usage and requires us to return it to its original condition, ordinary wear and tear accepted.
Other than the taint of that Republican stain on our building? But you will... Yeah, yeah, see, I get some Amys down here. But no, you will return it back to, yeah.
We are a nonpartisan 501(c)(3).
And we take, and we take all the tea bags out?
Yes, and the elephants.
We'll leave the elephants in tea bags, okay. All right. All right, I think that's generally, I think that was generally the concerns of everybody on council, as long as you've worked out this agreement. And Mr. Boatwright, do you want to add something to that?
Yeah, the agreement specifically states that we could offer up to 40,000 square feet of space. It doesn't necessarily specify the Whitlatch Building. Certainly, the Whitlatch Building was one of the buildings that was contemplated. And if we did sell the building, we would make the numbers work as far as, you know, and Bonnie can speak to that a little better.
So, we're in the process of, we have an RFP for the Whitlatch Building that's out on the streets right now. In the event that we get such a deal that we don't want to turn it down at this point, and we always have the option to turn it down, to say, no, at this time, we don't want to sell the Whitlatch Building. But if we do get a deal that's so good that, you know, is good for the community and we have a good price, one of the minimum requirements that we would have is that if we do have to go out and find additional space to accommodate the 40,000 square feet, that that would be considered in the purchase price of the Whitlatch Building, so that it would be at a minimum money-neutral, that we wouldn't have to put any money out, just to be clear.
Okay. All right, and folks, we all know this will be, if this is acceptable and there's a motion, then we'll be voting on this this evening. So any other questions? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, sir.
And then Mr. Miller?
I know it's not in here, but is there any occupied buildings, such as Courthouse, is this building being considered?
The Courthouse?
Other than the rotunda?
Yeah, it would just be the rotunda. I don't believe there's any other office space that's being considered.
Okay. There's wild rumor out there through the employees that they're going to close down the Courthouse, so...
And how long is this for? Like a month?
Five days.
A month leading up to the convention?
It'll be here five days.
Yeah, the office space ramps up over the course of a year period. So, we'll ramp up to 40,000 square feet when the Committee on Arrangements, which is the body that runs a lot of the logistics of the convention, is fully staffed up to the level of several hundred people.
And you haven't picked a date yet, right?
So, we have not...
It's the summer of 2016, all right?
It is. It's either the June or the July date.
Okay. All right, Mr. Miller?
My question?
If we may, just very quickly.
Go on.
I don't mean to interrupt. On the Courthouse, the agreement is that it's available during the evenings at mutually agreed upon dates and times, not that it's used during the day or anything of that nature.
Yeah. We would use it. It'll probably be used by either a corporation or a delegation from around the country for an evening event. There'll be catering, drinks, etc.
Yeah, and keep in mind the soldiers and sailors monument. That's available also for an event. But I got, you got, you know, four Republican presidents who were generals in the Civil War who became from Ohio, so...
That's a terrific idea, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
My question is following up on the council president's question. When is it anticipated that a date would be selected?
By year-end.
By year-end.
I can tell you that it's leaning more towards the more conservative date, if you will, but the current candidates are still considering both dates.
The more conservative date would be the July date, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Madam President?
Okay.
Can I, just a quick question on parking at the Huntington Parking Garage? Maybe this is more a question for Bonnie. How are we going to make sure that the litigants and the parties who have to have access to the court will have that available to them? And for what period of time will the garage be otherwise occupied?
Well, I think that's something as we get closer to the date, and in fact, I just came from a meeting where we talked about parking and the upgrades to the Huntington Park Garage. So, we do have to go through and get a parking scheme as we get closer and figure out how this is all going to, going to work, and do dry runs, and, you know, you're going to have an influx of people coming in all at one time. We've got to make sure that the experience is a good experience. So, you know, we're going to have to do some dry runs ahead of time to make sure that it functions well, and we'll make sure that, you know, all of our parties are being accommodated and not just the convention-goers, but our regular customers as well.
Right. And how much notice do you think we'll have for that? And the courts and the litigants will need advance notice, too? People who have, need access to the court.
At this time, I can't answer that question, but we do recognize that it's very important that, you know, we have to run our everyday business as, you know, while all these people are coming in, and we want to make sure that it's a good experience for people that have never been to Cleveland, too. So, we have to figure that out, and I can't, I'm not prepared to answer that right now.
Okay. And lastly, with regard to the airport, are we going to see an influx of private jet, private plane activity, so the residents perhaps should, this is down the road, but maybe contemplate some adjustments to the resident's normal flight pattern schedule?
And do you mean the Cuyahoga County Airport?
Yeah, because it looks like...
Or Hopkins Airport?
No, because we're using some space at the Cuyahoga County Airport, and I'm assuming, I guess they won't be using that for coming in and out of town, right? You'll be using for...
They may, they may. And they, I think they requested some VIP space for when they come into, into the county airport. We have already had discussions with our FOB in regard to, in regard to VIP services. And as you know, too, that we have a tentative schedule for construction at that time, too. So, we're going to schedule our construction around that event as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, there is a motion. We can move this to the full council agenda for second reading adoption or suspension.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I believe you have a proposed substitute that you might consider?
Oh, which, okay.
Page seven of your packet.
Okay, this is a substitute. Okay. All right, so the discussions this afternoon were about the substitute amendment. All right, is there a motion to adopt the substitute?
I saw the second.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion on the proposed substitute? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The proposed substitute is the one that if there's no other discussion, we can entertain a motion to move it on to the agenda for this, for this evening's meeting for second reading adoption.
I saw the second.
All right, moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any other discussions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And, okay, Republican National Committee should be all set. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 0208. You want to read that one?
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution number 2014-0208. A resolution making an award on requisition number 30449 to Cleveland Clinic Foundation in the amount of $125,000 for the sale of county-owned property commonly known as the former Metro Health Clement Center located at 2500 East 79th Street, Cleveland, authorizing the county executive to execute the purchase and sale agreement and all other documents consistent with this resolution and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right, do you want to be heard on this? And I guess Jean has included a number of documents regarding the possible sale and the various bids in your packet. Bonnie?
Thank you. Just to introduce Ryan Jeffers, you all know Ryan Jeffers from previous property consolidation, but this property was part of the original RFP to consolidate our property. We have a couple of properties, the Whitlatch being one, the old juvenile court, as well as this one, that were part of the original 13 pieces of property that we were proposing to divest in. So, I'm going to hand it over to Ryan like I have before, and he's going to go over, I'm being very respectful of your time, I know you have a busy agenda today, going over the proposal as we have in the past for previous properties.
I may need a quick password for the computer. Thank you for meeting today and discussing this property. Once we get the password in, we'll throw up a presentation on the screen, but I'll begin regardless, because I know that you're short on time. The former Metro Health Clement Center, which is located at 2500 East 79th Street, as Bonnie had said, was one of 13 properties that was initially given to CBRE, owned by the county, and being put up for disposition. The building is a 50,000-square-foot former medical, neighborhood medical facility that unfortunately, after being closed, and the presentation should be ready, after being closed down, has really fallen into disrepair. It sits on about six and a half acres of land on the west side of East 79th, just north of Woodland, over in the Fairfax neighborhood. It's an industrial, light industrial area, a couple of large pieces of property with some vehicle maintenance facilities and storage facilities and scrapyards in the area. I'm going to give you a quick recap right here of where we've been. I won't go through it in detail, but as you can see, we're kind of coming to the conclusion of our property consolidation project. The vast majority of the properties that we've been asked to handle have either been sold, are in process, or have been identified, for example, with the former administration building as a development site for the convention center hotel. And the Metro Health Clement Center received one formal proposal in this round of RFP. We did get two bidders who had registered for the project, and unfortunately, one of them ultimately submitted to withdraw their name and not have a bid submitted. So, your proposer that we have reviewed and worked with on this transaction is the Cleveland Clinic, actually. One of the groups that we had hoped would gain interest in the property, knowing what we knew about their facility plans. With a large parcel like this and its relative proximity to the clinic, it makes for a potential natural site for them to use while they have their own campus renovations. The clinic's intended use of the property would be initially to use the existing parking field and renovate the site to expand the parking field. They would, in fact, tear down the existing building that's there, and they would be staffing it with shuttles and security during business hours for their own employees while they renovate their campus. This would be anticipated to begin in the spring of 2015. The clinic offered a price of $125,000 for the property, which was right in the middle of where we had anticipated this might come in. The parcel itself is quite large, but unfortunately, because of the potential soil issues and the condition of that existing building, market value for the property is really hindered by the building that's there. And the fact that most anybody needing to use it would either need to tear it down or renovate that building to a substantial seven-figure number. So, $125,000 is right in between a rough range of 100 to 150 that we had anticipated might be the value in a sale for this property. The clinic intends, in their renovation, to conform to their own sustainability guidelines and development standards, which are very thorough with all of the work and projects they've done. As you can imagine, they've got a whole playbook of standards that they're, that they hold themselves to for design and environmental sustainability. And a couple of other notes about the, about the project and the terms of the transaction. The clinic's intent is to accelerate the due diligence and closing process beyond what the county had originally put into the RFP. So, they're looking at a 30-day due diligence period and a 10-day close after that. One of the things that really appealed to the county was that they intend to close in cash and are not worrying about putting any contingencies on the deal. So, they intend not to worry about financing or anything like that. An interesting aspect of their proposal was that at the conclusion, given their involvement in the community, at the conclusion of their use of the site as parking, they intend to work with Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation to redevelop the site in a way that really works with the neighborhood and is in the community's best interest. So, that's a quick summary of what we have on the table.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I do have a question, though, generally about, you know, the sale of this real estate, in that, you know, the county put out a list of buildings that we're going to sell, and then some were sold and some were not. My question is, how long is the offer out there for sale? I mean, at some point, we say like, you know, we don't want to sell this building anymore. Is there a formal process that the county goes through to announce, well, we're taking this off the market? Or can the county executive just say, okay, sorry, we're not selling this anymore?
You mean at this point going forward or in the past?
Yeah, in the past. I mean, just, whether it's this building or the other building. So, we put 13 properties out there, and then we, you know, we sold some, and some of them were out there for, still for sale. And at some point, somebody says, well, you know, you never sold this one, what are you going to do? And all of a sudden, no, it's off the market. Shouldn't there be a process where we announce, we're taking this one off the market?
Yeah, the one explanation I would say is the way that we put them on the market was through a broker. So, obviously, when it's taken off the market, it'll go off the brokers. You know, they will no longer advertise it, they will no longer take the efforts to market the property, so that...
Does the offer for a specific period of time, as long as you have the deal?
We did not put a time limitation on that RFP when it was issued. So, you could, generally, sometimes they're done, and sometimes they're even limited to say six months or things of that nature. But when we issued that RFP, we did not, because we didn't, I mean, it was diverse portfolio of properties, you didn't know what was, what the options were out there. So, we kept the flexibility in how we issued that RFP, that it didn't have a time limit on it. But obviously, at any point, you know, if we no longer want to sell a property, we take it off the market.
And how do you do that?
We instruct CBRE to no longer market it.
Is it a public announcement or what?
I mean, you could, it's, I guess you take it off your website. Yeah, we, so, the RFP that Director McLoughlin is referring to is the RFP, I believe, that we were engaged, that CBRE was engaged through. Once notified by the county, and the, the contract that we have does allow for the county to dictate, stop marketing this, begin marketing this, at your discretion. So, if you determine to say...
Now, who is you? I mean, is that only, who is the county? Is that the county executive, or can council come in and say, you know what, we don't want you to sell this? My understanding, the charter, this is totally under control of the executive.
So, we get our direction technically from Public Works. That's who we would expect that communication from. Yeah, I mean, now, if council doesn't want to sell a property, obviously, you don't have to approve a contract, or you can tell the executive, okay, we don't, we know, we no longer want you to market this, we won't approve it if you bring it along. But the, the idea is Public Works would tell CBRE, you know, stop any efforts to market this property.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chair.
I just, since, since the chairperson's brought this up, it just, I, the Courthouse Square property that the executive was using during one of the three stops along the way in this term, it was my understanding that that was put on the market and that it was, that someone won the bid for that. Is that no longer on the market? What's, what's the status?
Yeah, the, I would caution against the use of the term "won the bid" because winning the bid meaning this council approving the...
Okay, well, that's semantics.
No, but, yeah.
But, you know, I think we know, somebody won the bid.
The, no, but the issue, I think, the way that the process works is that there is a, you know, you get the scoring, you do the scoring, and then once you do the scoring, you negotiate an agreement. And I, that seems to have, I mean, I think there was, again, remember the confidentiality of that, but there were negotiations on that property. I don't know that we actually ended up having a final agreement, so...
Well, if there's something, Madam Chairperson, to the law director, if there's something that I'm, don't, you know, I don't want to talk about something in public I'm not supposed to talk about, so just kind of wave your hand at me if I, if I go too far. But the fact is, is that I'd like to know what the status of the building is and whether it's off your website. Do you know offhand?
So, offhand, I do know that we, that we did receive offers on the building. We did engage in negotiations with various groups that offered. We never got to the point of finalizing a contract and bringing it to council, which you know. We were told since then to put it on hold and remove it from active marketing.
You were told to put it on hold by whom?
By the administration of Public Works, because we were not prepared yet to move forward to contract, but at the same time, we did not want to withdraw. Let me just say this very quickly, because I, I prefer to speak offline about...
You use your hands, so I don't know whether you're telling me to stop talking.
Absolutely. I think the issue, I can just sort of speak very generically, in generic terms, is the issue is the employees who are in that building, I think part of the thought process was that they would move into the Justice Center or the other properties associated with the Justice Center. With that process taking longer, new facts came on the ground that, you know, we anticipated when it was put on the market, that, you know, you'd do a lease for a certain time period, and at the conclusion of the lease, we would have moved our, we had a location sort of in mind where we would move the employees out of that building. With the building of the hotel and other advancements that have happened, it complicated that question, which ended up putting it on hold. And I think we'll be very happy to discuss offline a lot of this and give you more of the details in terms of what happened with that. But I think that was the issue that happened with it, is, you know, you had an idea of where you would relocate the employees who were in that building in the very same vicinity, and then some of the changes, you know, ended up putting it on hold. But we can give you more details.
I'd like to have that discussion.
All right, Mr. Miller, I think you had a question?[1771.12]
All right, Mr. Miller, I think you had a question.
Madam President, first to the law director, I'd also like to be included in the discussion on Courthouse Square. And, and to Mr. Jeffers on the Clement Center, is the, as part of the sale agreement, is the county absolved of any responsibility that we might have for any, any soil or other environmental conditions that, that might be on the site? I know that there's, there's some circumstances in which, in which people go after prior owners on, on environmental issues. What's the status on that?
So it's a great question to defer to legal, simply because it is a legal question. I will tell you that the contract provides for the property to be sold as-is. And I don't know if Director McLough, Mr. Boatwright, if you would have any additional comments on that?
He's looking through the contract, but normally, the way these things work is if the injury happened, you go look to who owned it when the injury happened. So from the point that we sell it, we sell it as-is. If any injury happens after, after it's sold, obviously, the new owner is responsible for that liability. But if you have any historic claims from when we owned it, those normally come back. Joe's checking on this contract, if it deviates from that normal practice, but normally, that's how, how those, now, we're not aware of claims for historic, so from when they buy it, they're buying it as-is, and they have, you know, at this point, it's their responsibility and not ours.
Let's see, I got a list of Mr. Gallagher, then Mr. Harrison, and Mr. Jones.
Mr. Law Director, get your hand ready. Going back to Mr. Brady's question. There was a public offering of this property? There was a bid process?
Yes.
There was a winner?
No, there was, I mean...
There was no, there was no winner?
There, again, keep it, and we always get very cautious about that. A winner is, is the, the body that has the legal authority to make the award is the county council. What happens at the administrative level is a scoring and then a recommendation that comes to the county council based on that scoring of who...
Scoring?
Huh?
There was a scoring?
There was a scoring, yes.
There was somebody that scored higher than the others?
I, I think that's correct, yes.
At what point does this get pulled? And who pulls that? And I can't seem to get that answered privately, and now that we're in public, I'm wondering if I can get it in public. Who, whose determination is this? Once a public building is put up for sale, there's an, an auction or whatever, the RFP, there's, there's a acceptable bid offer? And then after all of this, it gets pulled? Who pulled that offer?
The, again, huh, Courthouse Square, but, but I don't know that there, you know, we're reaching the conclusion that there was an acceptable offer. No, but seriously, Mike, the, the, the process, the way that the process works is the scoring is what starts the negotiations process. And until you reach that agreement, and it's usually signed by the buyer, and then it's submitted to the, to the council, is when you have the, you know, you've reached that point. You never got to that point, because there was no agreement that was signed by the, by the, by the potential buyer.
Just one more time, and, and maybe you don't want to answer this in public, but you didn't want to answer it in private either.
By the way, I'm not the person who's answering this.
I understand, I don't even know why I'm talking, you shouldn't be talking to Bonnie. Who pulled this? Give me somebody's name.
As we look to, to Director McLough's point, as we go through our negotiations, and this is with all properties, we're negotiating, the, the intended bidder is, the intended bidder is, is giving us numbers, and we're running the numbers. And, and to the point where now we have the variable of the Justice, Justice Center study and the rehab of the Justice Center, we have to, we have to reevaluate those numbers differently. How long are we going to be in the building? What's it going to cost us to be in the building to lease back versus own it?
So we shouldn't have put it on the market to begin with? Someone screwed up?
No, nobody screwed up.
Okay, so we put a property on...
The rules have changed from...
Who changed the rules?
When we started looking at the Justice Center and doing the analysis of the Justice Center, the thought was is that we could rehab that sooner rather than later, and then we got into the extent of the work that needed to be done. Now we're talking a 15, 20-year plan, if that's the direction that we want to go. We need to house our employees somewhere. If it's a 15-year plan, a 20-year plan, it doesn't make any sense to lease that for that period of time. It would cost us more to lease it for that a period of time than if we sold, than...
So the name of the person is?
I, I guess if, if you want to say that, that I made that decision, if you want to pin it on one person, but it's...
Well, and I don't want you to say that unless indeed you did make that decision.
It's a group effort, and it's...
Who's in the group?
It would be Ryan, it would be Director McLough, it would be the county executive.
So you don't want to answer?
You just said, who's in the group? I just told you who was in the group, I answered the question.
I think I, I, I pretty much know the answers to all these questions. I just want somebody to tell me what happened. And the law director and you are dancing, I get it, you don't want to answer this. It's, it's one person's name made this decision. It wasn't a group. We marketed a building, it was put out there fair and square, and it got pulled. I just want to know who pulled it. And, and, and if we did do this, and it were, and it was just a mistake, shouldn't we have not have marketed that building? If we knew that we were going to need that space, because the Justice Center project was, was being worked on?
Hi, Councilman Gallagher, we did not make a mistake. I will be very clear about that. You don't know what the end result is going to be unless you put out proposals and you find out what the, what the price is. You asked for who was in the group, I answered the question, I answered the question that you wanted me to.
So is the collectively, the group made this decision to pull it?
I would say yes.
Collectively?
Yes, based on analysis.
Give me the names of all the group people, because I think they all need to be fired.
Okay.
Mr. Harrison? And then Mr. Jones, and Mr. Jamana.
If I may, just, so, very quickly, just sort of a piece of explanation, is, is any public entity, when you always, and, and there is a reason for that, any bid, any, and this was not a bidding process, this was an RFP process, but, you know, competitive procurement, not competitive bidding, but even if it were competitive bidding, by definition, almost the, you have the right to reject the, any all bids and any or all bids and parts or not parts, but because conditions change on the ground from when you put the, the RFP out on the market, you had a, a vision of how things may work out when the, when the RFP goes on, on the market. Conditions on the ground change, and the issue specifically is where do we re, the issue is not necessarily in terms of the proposals that we got, but the issue was the life expectancy of how long we were going to lease that building. If the life expectancy is we would lease that building for five years, the economics potentially were there, that you would sell the property, you would lease it back for five years, in the five years, you would have moved the employees somewhere else. If the conditions on the ground change, that now you can't move the employees within that five-year period, but it's a 10-year period, or it's a, it's a longer time period, the economics no longer work. So we would, we would sell the property to somebody with a lease-back provision for five years, knowing full well that we need to be there for more than five years, or we need to find some alternative space to lease, to lease to move those employees there. The economics no longer work, the conditions change, and that's what ends up happening. I mean, that's exactly what happened here.
Well, it wasn't very public, other than it was publicly, we were going to sell it, and then all of this happened behind a curtain. There was a dollar figure out there. There were negotiations, you don't want to admit that, but there were, and...
I've never denied that there were negotiations, but I think the issue...
There were. And if we were worried about a five-year lease back, what, what if the potential winner of the bid was willing to lease that back to you for 20 years? Does that change it? If we have a 20-year Justice Center deal?
Change the financial ma, metric, sure.
And was that pursued, or did we just pull it? I don't want to take up your time, you don't want to answer.
Yeah, this is, this is...
Who binds a Mr. Harrison?
Just a quick comment, Madam Chair, and to the other members of council, I think this is what happens when communication is not had properly, when you don't come back to the council and let them know what's going on about things that we've discussed, issues, this where, you know, just been here, you know, the communication, like we've all expressed many, many times with administration of those who are service directors in the departments, where the ball is dropped there, nobody talks to anybody. We're kind of sometimes the last person, the body to know what's going on with some of these issues. So I think it's one thing we really have to, to do better on, Mr. McLough and to Bonnie, is really those, those tough questions, really have to answer them. Just back to the Cleveland Clinic sale, I'm looking at page 14 on the proposals received. Cleveland Clinic, in fact, was the only, I just want to make sure this is correct, that there was the only proposal that we did receive.
Yes, there were two groups that registered, and one withdrew at the end. So the Cleveland Clinic was the only group that...
One did withdrew, okay.
Yeah, ended up submitting a full proposal.
Okay. To the sale price, what was the appraised? Did we get the, the property appraised? What, what did that number come in at?
We didn't have a formal appraisal of the property done, but we estimated its value based upon its current condition, which has a large impact at somewhere between $100,000 to $150,000, within that range. All indications from the contractors that we had look at the site are that the demolition of that building and the associated cleanup was a healthy six-figure number, probably in the range of a quarter of a billion dollars. So whoever takes on this property assumes that liability. And interestingly enough, there is a comp right down the street on 79th to the south that is currently being marketed, and I shouldn't say it's a comp in that it hasn't been sold yet, but it's being marketed, it is a slightly larger piece of land, a comparably sized building, is being marketed, is valued at about 120.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to, to see where, how do we get to this 125 number? Was it negotiated, or did we have official appraised value? And where do we fall in with that number? Because you, we mentioned that we were right in the middle of what we anticipated for the sale price, so thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you make these concise questions.
Yeah, Jeff, I, I grew up in, I, you went to this Metro Center, Clement Center when I was little, so, to see it now in disrepair the way it is, and I know it has structural, foundational issues.
Yeah.
What I want to know is who was the other bidder that bid? I have many in the community have asked me about it, and of course, everyone's directed to you and to the administration, but I'd like to know who that second bidder was.
And I can send you the name. I apologize, offhand, I don't remember, it was an individual, it was not a corporation. It's interesting, when you look at, we had 13 properties, you know, one of which was the site on which we are in right now, which obviously got a lot of public attention. But of all the properties that we marketed, the one that received the most calls was this site. We responded to every single call and every single email, and then somewhat to Councilwoman Connolly's question before, when this did not successfully sell in the first round in 2012, and we, we took it back to market, effectively, what we did is we let this property percolate. We've done the same thing with the Whitlatch property. So as people would see the sign, and we would have it on our website, and we would continue to talk about it and put the flyer out there, but we didn't necessarily have a call for bids. You know, we wanted to get the interest to a point that we felt good, putting out a request for offers again. We would keep a tally of all the phone calls, all the emails, all the inquiries that would have been made about a property, and...
How many inquiries were there?
On this one, it was over 100.
Over 100.
It was, it was just, it was, it was very interesting, because this site of all the ones, and I think it's simply because, like you, people in the neighborhood remember attending it when they were younger, East 79th gets a fair amount of street traffic, and so people see the sign, and they wonder what's going on, and they, they put in a call. Not every call, obviously, was somebody who really wanted to buy, some people just had some interest, but we called them all back. And everybody, of all the calls and everything, we only got two registered bidders and one offer in this round, which I think was also very interesting, because a lot of the people who called fortunately didn't have concepts fully developed to put forth, and I think they knew it. So we can certainly give you the name of the other group, it might be somebody who rings a bell with you, I apologize, I don't remember their name offhand.
Okay. What do you remember? Here's, here's what's going to happen. I'm going to go back to the community meeting, and I'm going to share what happens, and then I'm going to have questions, some from people who may have inquired, maybe some who didn't inquire, but are just wondering, is this will be a project by someone in the community? Okay? So that, that's my reason for asking. And if you remember anything about that bidder, since there were two, I'd like to know what you do know, what you do remember, not the name.
I do, well, I need to get you the name. I had not talked to them before, they were not somebody who had formally inquired. They registered for the project over the internet through our website, and we followed up with a phone call, and just to make sure that they had all the, that they had the RFP, that they had all the directions they needed, and they, you know, ended up not submitting. So there, there wasn't anything about their particular use that I remember. I will tell you, because we reached out to Fairfax Development Corporation at the beginning and onset of the project to talk about what we were doing and, and what they'd like to see there, clinic has a great relationship with that group, obviously, and it's my understanding that while they may not have worked together in the clinic's offer, that they have been in touch since and really do intend to collaborate on the future use of that property after the clinic's parking.
Okay. If you, send me what you do have, if not now, just after the committee, send it to our chief of staff. The other, the other point of concern...
We have a lot of questions, so if you'd like to kind of tighten these up, because we got, we got three other people.
Tighten it up. We will tighten it up. We know it was structural damage, Cleveland Clinic, I do support this, Cleveland Clinic, obviously, will build a parking lot, but it's far away from their campus, so I can tell in time, they probably won't need that much parking or need that in time. How did we arrive at Fairfax as being, and, and does the county have any say into what the future development will be on this project?
So as the deal is set up now, the county doesn't have any formal legal input into the future use, but with the intent of the clinic, and the clinic participates in the Fairfax Board, mind you, you know, their intent to get Fairfax's input and make sure that the use is compatible with the community and supports it and probably enhances it, that to us felt like a good use of the property and a huge step up from what it's been for the last decade or so. But there's, there's no formal or legal mechanism for the county to impose a use following the clinic's parking.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Jamana?
This is pretty much an elementary question, but, you know, it's got Metro Health on, on the title of this property. How long has this been vacant? And have we cleared with Metro Health that they had no plans to, to rejuvenate or use that space?
Both very good questions, and I am not 100% on either, unfortunately. I believe, I've been anecdotally told by the sheriff's staff, because they obviously patrol that, that it's been a decade, but I don't know if that figure is exact or a round estimate. I would imagine that Bonnie might be able to speak further to Metro Health's conversations.
Thank you. And these are all conversations that happened before I was even here, before you were here, that, that they basically gave their response, Metro Health gave their responsibility over to the county as far as the property goes.
No plans then?
No. Okay, Miss, Miss Conwell? I'm sorry, Mr. Schron.
Thank you. Bonnie, I just want to get back to the questions Mr. Gallagher was focusing on, because there is no such thing as a, as a committee unless a committee takes a vote. So did the committee take an actual vote?
It did not, no.
So then how can the committee have made a decision if there wasn't a committee vote?
I would not call it a committee.
I thought you did call it a committee.
I did not call it a committee.
Okay, what, what, what is a group?
It was called a group.
Okay. What is a group? Please define is for me. What is a group?
A group is several people.
Okay, what is, and so what is the structure of the group?
There, it is no formal structure.
Then how do they have the authority to pull it? If there's no formal structure and no organization?
Well, I, I guess I would say it was never pulled, because it was never presented to council.
Did you score it?
We did score it, yes.
And was it scored to the point where it was worthy of at least considering whether or not you were going to, to move that property to the bidder?
We had negotiations after we scored it.
So the scoring was sufficient to have negotiations, that whether they turned out to be successful or not, means that you've at least, you were prepared to sell it to that person?
No, we are not prepared.
No, you were prepared if you were having negotiations. Whether the negotiations were successful is a different question. Is that...
That's true.
So you were prepared to sell it to them for the number they had on the piece of paper, if the negotiations would have been successful in whatever the other terms were going to be?
No, that's, that's not true.
Then why did you even pursue the dollar if the dollar number wasn't, wasn't the number worth pursuing?
And in most of our cases, when the final price that we agreed to, that have come before council, has not been the original price that they submitted to us. before council, ha- has not been the original price that they submitted to us. So to say that, that, um, we were prepared to sell it for the price is not a correct statement.
Okay, so they had a number on the piece of paper, and how far off it was, within the range to which you were expecting to have negotiations?
I would, again, we're getting to the point, but just sort of...
My problem is that you keep telling us a group, no longer a committee or no longer a formal organization, pulled it. To Mr. Gallagher's point, I always find that somebody leads that decision. I would like to know who led that group's decision on the record? And if it wasn't an individual, then that group, whether it be the four people you've already named, someplace there had to have been a vote by that group.
There was, there was not a vote.
Okay, then who made the decision to pull it?
It was a discussion amongst the group as far as whether we should further pursue, um, negotiations with...
So how many people in the group, four?
There may have been even more, I mean, with all the discussions we had, I don't...
Is there, is there a record of this group? It's a public body, yes, that you, this group? Was, was it a public extension of this county?
They're public employees.
Okay, so it's an extension of this body? The, the body of the county government?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
I think, I think that, and I, I started this discussion out, and I think Miss Conwell has a question.
I think we have the, I think we have the group come in here and take, raise their hand, because this body has subpoena authority.
Yeah, okay, all right. And Miss Conwell, is your question about this, or...
About the Clement.
Okay.
On here, on, on Councilman Harrison's point, I, I was concerned about, I'm concerned about the appraised value of the property as well. Uh, in regards to, um, this particular property, you said it was in disre- disrepair, but we're still selling it for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the same price I do believe that we sold the neighborhood community building, which was in good shape. So I'm just wondering...
We're talking the, the Glenville, uh, building?
Yes.
And so, sorry, where is it?
So why, if you have one in disrepair that needs to be torn down, but you had one that was in good standing, why didn't we, you know, why wouldn't this price be lower or the other one wouldn't be higher?
So they're not, uh, exactly comparable? The, um, the difference being that that building was just shy of twenty thousand square feet, uh, it was a single-story building.
Which building are you talking about?
I'm sorry, the Glenville, uh, neighborhood, the former Glenville Neighborhood Family Services Center, just shy of twenty thousand square feet, um, in a slightly different area that always has an impact on real estate valuation, and not nearly as large of a piece of land with different zoning. And so what you're looking at with the former Clement Center is a roughly fifty thousand square foot building with a much bigger piece of land at about six and a half, little over six and a half acres, uh, in a different zoning. So, um, they can't really be considered comparables to one another in the, in the real estate world because they are very different properties. Um, I, I hear what you're saying, uh, but, you know, Clement Center is much bigger, land and building, and in disrepair, so the fact that the prices are close, I think speaks to the Clement Center's condition.
Okay, so and if it was in good condition, we would have gotten a better dollar amount, due to the size, is what you're saying?
Right. In theory, if this were a fully functional, good-shaped medical building, the, the number would be a much higher building, because you'd be able to reuse it.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Greenspan, one question for you.
Yeah, with twenty...
With a lot of parts.
With, let me, no, the, the, um, it's interesting, because the discussion on the, on Courthouse Square, um, obviously struck a chord. This body has by charter the, the authority to conduct investigations. This may be leading to our first investigation. I'm gonna start with a request, a soft request. I don't want to go to a public records request, but I will. I would like all documents pertaining to this transaction, including a timeline, including emails, text messages, voicemails, phone logs, um, anything consistent with public records requests, short of making one. Um, include, like I said, timelines, I'd like to know when negotiations broke down, everything from when our process began all the way to today. So I, I will direct it to the law director. I don't know to what extent we can receive Ryan's information as a non-county employee, but, uh, as quickly as we can have that information would be better. I'll set a deadline of two weeks. If we don't get it within two weeks, I'll, I'll make a deadline of two weeks. If we don't get it in two weeks, then I'll submit a public records request, asking for the same information. Thank you.
Okay, and, and just to, to follow up, my question is the process. When you put a building out there, when you decide to take it off, what is the process? But anyway, let's go back to our item on zero-two-zero-eight. Is there any other discussion about this item? Because this would be, if there is a motion, we can move it to the full agenda, it is on the agenda for this evening, and Cleveland Clinic has, I guess, they've got their check ready, and we'll be divested of this property, and they'll be moving forward. So is there any other discussion on this, on the sale of the, uh, old Metro Health building? All right, is there a motion to move it forward to, uh, the full agenda for our second reading under suspension of the rules?
Move second.
Uh, moved by Mr. Gallagher and seconded by Ms. Conwell? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it will be on the, it's already on the agenda for this evening. All right, Miss, Madam Cook, thank you, Mr. Jeffries.
Thank you.
Um, item zero-two-one-oh.
Resolution number two thousand and fourteen, zero-two-one-zero. A resolution making an award on requisition number three-one-three-three-seven to Parsons Brinkerhoff Incorporated in the amount not to exceed two million, eight hundred, eight thousand, four hundred, twelve dollars for architectural engineering design services for the pedestrian and bicycle bridge from the malls to the lakefront project for the period September nine, two thousand and fourteen, through December thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, authorizing the county executive to execute the contract and all other documents consistent with said award and this resolution, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right, Bonnie?
Thank you. Bonnie Too, Director of Public Works, again. Being respectful of your time, we'd like to give a, a, a very brief, um, uh, summary of the project and, and, and why we're here. I'd like to introduce a few people that we have here. Um, we have Jeremy Paris from, uh, the Executive Director for, uh, the Group Plan Commission. We also have Ann Zoller, who's been very active with the, the Group Plan Commission. Um, did Chris go away? Okay, Chris Ronay was here, also with the, the Group Plan Commission. And then we have representatives from Parsons Brinkerhoff, Jeff Flechek, and our project manager, um, Brian Reynolds is also here. Um, if allowed, um, like Jeremy, to have a kind of a brief overview just of, of why this project is important, and then I'll get into the specifics of how we got to the selection of Parsons Brinkerhoff.
Hi, thanks for having me here today. It's nice to be in your new, beautiful new council chamber. Should I? So I, I think you're all familiar with the Group Plan Commission, but I want to give you a little bit of an update about what we are, what we're doing, where we are, and why that this bridge project is such an important piece of, uh, of what we're, what we're working with our, our public partners and others. Uh, the Group Plan Commission is a five oh one C three nonprofit. Uh, it was, we formed a year and a half ago, we recently received our, our IRS status. Uh, and we exist to, uh, help, uh, update Cleveland's iconic signature spaces downtown, um, to work on an agenda of projects that have sort of been long in the public eye and, 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 and worked on, uh, for years, uh, to revitalize Cleveland's downtown core, coupled with the three billion dollars in downtown development since two thousand and ten. Uh, this is sort of connective tissue, um, public space, it's free-for-all, that, that connects the dots between these exciting developments, and also will stimulate further development. Um, one of the, uh, uh, our work has sort of been guided by the two thousand and eleven report of the original Group Plan Commission, uh, which, uh, did an extensive study, extensive outreach, uh, multiple committees over, the course of over a year, and identified three priority projects, uh, that, that are sort of guiding what we're doing, uh, and they, they sort of form a connective tissue between, uh, the terminal tower, uh, going down to the lakefront. So, you know, one of those was the revitalization of Public Square, uh, which is ongoing, and we're excited about where that project is. Uh, I'm happy to fill you in on, on that, and we're, we're still working, uh, through the approvals process, uh, with the city and with, with other stakeholders, but we anticipate breaking ground this fall, uh, and getting that completed in time for the Republican National Convention in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the second piece, of course, is the malls, uh, malls A, B, and C, uh, which include the baseline work that you all have invested in, that's the roof deck of the convention center. Um, and, uh, we are, uh, that project is ongoing, those investments are ongoing, uh, but one of the, the pieces of that project is, is waiting for the convention center hotel to be completed, for the Drury Plaza Hotel to be completed, which, see how that space is activated, uh, see how it's used by people. And then the, the third, and one of the, the, the very top priority projects of ours is the pedestrian and bright bridge, finally to connect, uh, the downtown core, the downtown civic core with the lakefront, uh, with the assets that are there. Um, the, the plans are for, uh, an iconic, uh, pedestrian and bicycle bridge. Uh, if you've ever stood on the roof deck over the convention center, looked down at the water, which I know I've done a bunch, and, and I suspect you all have done some, people see it, they discover the lake, and they want to get down to there, and coupled with, uh, uh, the, the city's, uh, selected lakefront developer, coupled with the Rock Hall, the Science Center, the Browns, having a, a, a true bike and pedestrian way to connect, um, the, the new activity up in the, uh, with the hotel, and up on the mall, and up with the convention center, and all the way through to Tower City, down with the lakefront, is an exciting thing that's long overdue. Uh, I know many people here, I've had talks with many of you, uh, frustrated that we haven't managed to literally bridge that gap. I, I called it the, uh, the mode of Cleveland, a fifty-foot bluff, heavy rail, light rail, uh, divided highway before you get to the lakefront assets, and so that's the aim of, of the project. Uh, one, one thing I want to mention is, we, we are a nonprofit. We have, uh, our board has four appointees from the county and four appointees from the city, as well as from a handful of other important stakeholders we work with, key civic stakeholders like the Downtown Cleveland Alliance, Greater Cleveland Partnership, Land Studio, and Ann will talk about their work, uh, in a minute. Just such a great civic asset to have, and, and they have led the design, uh, work from, from its infancy and many, many years, uh, through to the point we are now, where we're actually able to start executing these projects. Um, and, uh, we, we've also, uh, worked with our philanthropic partners, the Cleveland Foundation and the Gunn Foundation both made significant contributions to Public Square. Um, and, uh, we are excited to work, uh, with, with you, uh, as well. I know, I, I can't thank you enough what a huge support it was, the operating funding you provided at the outset of this year has really kept us going, kept the design work going, uh, kept the engineering work going, and put us in a position to be successful now. Um, you know, I'll let, I'll let Bonnie talk specifically about, when she comes back up, about the status of the project. The, the one thing I, I did want to mention about our role, uh, with the Group Plan Commission, uh, is to, um, work with our public partners, make sure that this, this project, uh, has, has, um, all the support it needs, uh, bring in private and philanthropic resources to bear, uh, and also, uh, uh, keep pace with making sure it's an iconic design and one that we can all be proud of, and, and something that when the, the blimp is coming over the RNC or a Browns game, you'll see the structure and, and feel proud of it, but it's also functional. Uh, and we've had a process of working with stakeholders, uh, working with, uh, uh, public stakeholders, private stakeholders, uh, and that's gonna be ongoing, I think, as the design process, uh, goes on, and that's something Ann can talk about. Uh, Ann was, uh, one of our representatives on the design selection team, along with Chris Ronay, who's the Chair of our Planning and Design Committee at County Appointee, uh, to the Group Plan Commission. And I don't know, Ann, if you wanted to talk a little bit about that process and...
Well, I think, uh, I think Bonnie's gonna talk about that. My job here is quick. Uh, as Jeremy said, the Group Plan Commission is a five oh one C three, but they just recently got that designation, so about a year ago, working with Greater Cleveland Partnership, Land Studio submitted a request for five million dollars for state capital funding, and we were delighted that the Greater Cleveland Partnership ranked us as, at its number one priority, and we were funded. So I'm here just to say, on behalf of Land Studio, we did receive five million dollars of state capital funding that's reimbursable, that will be dedicated exclusively to this project. We're working with Bonnie and her team on many levels. We really appreciate the leadership of this body and the administration on this project and everything we're doing, but my message is simply, there's five million dollars of state capital dollars that we're excited to invest in this project. Thanks.
And I just want to make it clear, now, this two million eight is just for the architectural design and the plans. How much is the bridge gonna cost us altogether?
Well, we, we won't know that exact number until as, as we, uh, further the design, but, but we anticipate that, um, it could be anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five million.
And the city's gonna kick in some money, right?
That, that's the anticipation, correct.
Okay.
The agreement is the city has ten, we have ten, and then we use the five of the...
Yeah, but we're fronting the money for the plan, because the city hasn't given us any money yet, right?
That's right, and the, the thought was, is that, uh, the, the five million dollars of, of the state money works on a reimbursement, so that, um, we have to get, um, uh, all of the paperwork together before we can get the reimbursement, but that we could use that five million.
But if the city never kicks us any money, we gotta, do we have a, a plan that we can't use, or? We've got some Cleveland City Councilman back here.
Well, we feel very strongly that the city, that the city will support their, their ten, their share of the ten million dollars.
And this is very time-sensitive in terms of getting this, this process going?
It, it, that's correct, and I, I, I do want to thank all of you for, uh, accommodating us and, and getting this on the agenda very quickly. Um, you know, the goal is to get this, um, completed by the, the, uh, RNC. As we lay out our schedule, one of the challenges that we have is, is working, uh, actually building something over the railroads, and the railroads are, are very, um, uh, uh, they're very limited as far as the, the hours that you can work over their, uh, over their railroads. So the critical, their, their, the critical path of this project is actually getting it constructed and getting it constructed over the, the, the railroads. So we need to get the design done as quickly as possible. We're going to use a, a design-build process. Parsons Brinkerhoff, and I'm kind of getting ahead of myself, but Parsons Brinkerhoff is representing us as the owner. They're also doing the, the criteria design, so that when we go out to the design-build team, that they'll have a concept of what that design-build team should, um, should design and should build. Um, so it's important that we get the preliminary design, uh, designer on board as quickly as possible, so we can get this project moving forward, and, um, as you lay out the schedule, you know, it's, it's a very aggressive schedule, so I appreciate the fact.
But we are fronting the money here for the project.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Greenspan?
So...
You have a question, Mr. Greenspan?
I, I do. The, the five million dollars that's been received, what, what are the designated uses for those funds?
It, it, it's very open-ended as far as it's, it, the legislation talks about, and I don't know the, the exact wording, but it talks about for the, um, uh, for the, uh, the, the lakefront bridge, connection bridge. And I apologize, I don't know the exact language, but the, the legislation is very vague on its use for the project.
Is it possible that the two point eight, I understand it's a reimbursement, that the two point eight million that's being asked today could be reimbursed out of that five million?
We believe so, yes.
So in the event that this project does not move forward, county approves two point eight, but the project does not move forward for one reason or another, would the county then be able to be reimbursed out of the five million for its two point eight million?
We believe so, yes.
Is there any way that we could, we could get that memorialized, or at least a better understanding that we're able to secure that funding, should this project not move forward?
But there, there's still work that needs to be done before we actually get an approval from the, the state controlling board. So there's a lot, there's a lot of work that actually our consultant has to do before we get to that time where the controlling board approves that, so we, it's not something that, um, that we can get tomorrow. Um, we're several, several months down the road before we, we get the, um, uh, the approval from the controlling board.
And this is, I have a question for the law director, specifically as it relates to this Parsons contract. Is there a termination for conven- convenience provision in this agreement?
We're checking, I don't have a copy with it. Normally, that tends to be a, a provision in all of our contracts, but...
If, if I may, while they're looking that up, if, if I can go through, um, you know, If I may, while they're looking that up, if I can go through, you know, our process and how we got to this point, but with selecting Parsons Springerhoff, so you understand we did, we did publicly advertise for the project. For, it was an RFQ, we requested a qualifications package. We received six packages, we scored all three, all six. We selected the top three scores and we interviewed those three consultants. And from those interviews and the scores, we selected Parsons Springerhoff. The reason why we selected Parsons Springerhoff, the project manager, Ryan, or Brian Reynolds, who's here with us now, he just recently completed a project in Nashville that was very similar, a very tight timeframe over railroad tracks. Just so happens, it's in the area that the Nashville Convention Center has had. They brought a proposal to us that was very thorough, was very deliberate in how you would approach the project, understanding the importance of the railroad coordination. They also addressed the issue of representing the owner as we go through construction and their role working with the design-build team. So I hope I stretched it long enough to give you...
No, that's fine. And the answer is yes, actually it's quite an aggressive one. It can be terminated within five days' notice from the county to the architect. And if we give them the five-day notice and it's terminated, basically, you know, you pay them for the work that they did, but on the basis of work, you know, as determined by the county that that's reason, you know, they can't just charge you. So we have the discretion determining whether the work was satisfactory for the work that they did up until the termination date. Now, obviously, this contract is going to be moving very quickly, so I presume a lot of the costs will be upfronted, but we do have a termination for convenience clause and it's five days.
Well, thank you. And that was going to be my next question, the timeline from the date this is approved until the design plans are completed. Well, you're saying this is a design-build, so it'll continue on through the provision, through the length of the construction, correct?
Correct. So Parsons will hold public meetings and will come up with a concept design, what, basically what the bridge is going to look like. And to Jeremy's point, we do want this bridge to be iconic to Cleveland, that it becomes part of the skyline, that it's a recognizable landmark.
That's public speak for spending up to the top of the budget, right?
Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not going to be the architect of record, they're the criteria arch...
Correct.
Exactly. So it's, if you think of it like the way we do, we did the convention center where we had Cooper Carey, who's the architect, the criteria architect, the visionary as to how it's going to work, then when you retain the design-build team, the design-build team has an architect within it who's the architect of record. And then your criteria architect is the judge whether the design-build team's designs meets the intent of the criteria, of the design that was developed by the criteria architect.
So I'm trying to gauge our exposure as a county. So if we approve the 2.8 and for some reason the project doesn't proceed, we can terminate within five days. And then am I hearing correctly that the costs we've incurred, we can apply against the $5 million? So the potential, our potential exposure is limited and possibly eliminated?
I believe so.
Mr. McLough, is that your understanding?
I don't have the detail, I mean, on the, on the state, the part where I'm hesitating is the state contribution because, you know, you submit for the reimbursement and then what's that granted? I don't know exactly what the process on the reimbursement is, but, so I'm hesitating on that part because I don't know the answer outright.
I guess what I'm asking is if the, would the state reimburse us if the project doesn't move forward for costs that are incurred? Or does the project have to be completed?
And I guess I would, would go by my experience with other state fundings that if in fact there's costs that are incurred that was going towards a project that they have committed to, then you can, you can get reimbursed for those costs.
And I have two questions, but I'll condense it to one with two parts.
Yeah, because we've got to move along here.
Number one, who will own the bridge? Assuming the project goes forward, Cleveland puts in 10, we put in 10, the state puts in 5. Number one, who will own it? Go ahead, and then I'll ask the second question.
Okay. So it is two questions.
I'll withhold the second question.
Okay. So as far as the ownership goes, we're still in negotiations with the City of Cleveland as far as who's going to own that, that structure. Understanding the importance of getting this part of it, the criteria architect hired sooner rather than later, there are some things that we have to address in the future and we're still, we're still having discussions, we still need to have discussions with Cleveland as far as who the owner is.
Okay. And for sake of time, I'm not going to follow up with questions on that, I'll come back on that one. But who's responsible for the maintenance on the bridge on an ongoing basis?
And that gets to the owner and the, if there's an agreement that the owner wants to have as far as the maintenance goes.
And when, I'm going to have to ask the third, when do we expect those negotiations to take place?
I'm hoping we will have those resolved by the end of the year.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Madam Chair Director, can you explain the process and the timing by which the commitment from the City of Cleveland would come forward? The latest I heard is that it might be as much as a three-step process.
I think I can address that. I actually, I spent the morning with city council and talking about this project. There is currently legislation moving through city council right now that contains an authorization for its portion of the, of the bridge money, the 10 million, and also has some other sort of pieces related to property and how it would be handled to allow for the construction to occur ultimately. I do understand that there are follow-on processes that they would have to take to actually appropriate the money. As far as I understand it, it's a two-step process after that. But I have, we have been, and part of our role at the Group Plan Commission is been working with our public partners, both the city and the county are very focused on this project and on getting it done. So I think that what we are trying to do is address some of the money and how it's, how it's authorized and how, and you, the important question about who owns it, how it's maintained, and money that we're raising towards, towards maintenance and program with all these spaces as well. But I do want, we had a hearing today, some of the legislation will go next week, and I think there will be follow-on related to the 10 million.
And Madam Chair, have the, have the mayor and the President of Council expressed a commitment that this is going to happen?
The mayor, you know, I can only speak to the public record, but in last June, the mayor stood up at the county executive and committed to the county's support for the bridge, you know, as part of the group plan project. And it was at the time that they made the commitment to the hotel and the project as a whole. And I think that that led to your authorization for 10 million as part of the hotel contract. But, so that commitment is made, I don't want to characterize the county, the President of Council's commitment, we're working through council right now, he's been supportive but also scheduling hearings and wanting to have a full process, so I don't want to speak for the city council.
Final question is that, that I've heard a lot about this project and I've heard a lot about the Public Square project, but I haven't heard much recently about the upgrade to the mall project. And can you say briefly what the status of that is, what the expected cost is, and how much if any that the county might be asked to put in for that project?
Well, thank you for that question. You know, the malls, you probably saw, I mean, over the course of years, there was a more aggressive plan for redoing the malls. And one determination we made as a commission in conjunction with our public partners was that the new hotel coming in sort of changed the dimension around thinking about what would be the right things to do on the malls. For example, we had a plan for a cafe on, I think, Mall C. Now that the county hotel is going to have a cafe with a terrace that comes out on Mall B, that plan changed. So we've scaled back, and it isn't scaling back from the commitment to really enhancing the malls and having that happen over time, but it's to focus on infrastructure needs, temporary public art, and things to wait and see that space mature and be activated by the hotels, as well as by the public square and the bridge on the ends, providing more activity for the space. I think the current, the current budget, you know, it could be three and a half to four to $5 million of enhancements on the malls. The, we are not currently asking the county directly for funds. We are hoping that some of the funds from the sale of the convention center and global center might be used for mall enhancements, but we aren't, we aren't currently making a request, and the dollar figures are much lower than they once were.
And I think that this is an excellent question, I think we will have a separate meeting on this to catch some of this stuff up.
That's fine, I just wanted an overview, that's all I need now.
And Mr. Schran, briefly?
Thank you.
On that last point, Madam Chair, I'm one of your appointees from county, Chris Renee. I just wanted to offer, we did once before have sort of open hours for, and some of you took us up on this at 323 Lakeside, looking at one of the members who did, on the input process. So if there's, you know, one of your appointees standing in front of you, if you want us, Jeremy, Ann and I, to host some hours to have a much more deliberative conversation about design input, we're open. It's just an open invitation, so, thank you.
All right, Mr. Schran?
Yeah, because of the time sensitive of the bridge, this Bonnie, have all the aerial rights been negotiated with the railroad? Having dealt with the railroads, they are sometimes a challenge.
Yes, they have. The city, as you're aware, the city had a variation of this, this project that they applied for Tiger Grant, and they've been working for the aerial rights and they have secured those.
Okay, thank you.
Are there, are there any specific questions on this issue of the award to Parsons Springerhoff? Is there a motion to move this to the full, to the regular agenda for this evening's meeting? All right, any other discussion? Moved by, is moved by Mr. Brady and second by Mr. Gallagher. All who are in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Moving on to item 2014-0014.
Ordinance number 2014-0014, an ordinance establishing the Cogga County Property Demolition Fund and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
We have two people who wanted to speak and I...
Ma'am, I'm sure that has changed, now I have four.
People that want to speak on this, so I thought it more appropriate to bring those folks in right as we, before we discuss this item, so go ahead.
The first person to speak is Ron O'Leary.
And you have three minutes and you'll get a ding and we're going to cut you off.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of council. I'm Ron O'Leary, I'm the City of Cleveland's Director of Building and Housing. Just wanted to give you a little bit of information about the demolition of the city. Thank the council. What question?
Sorry about that, Councilman. Thank the council and the county for taking up this piece. We've been reviewing the need for demolition in the city for a number of years, and to give you a snapshot, we estimate that there are currently about 8,300 vacant distressed structures in the City of Cleveland. Obviously, any of these can be rehabbed, but our experience is that a great number of these will need to be demolished. And at about an average of $10,000 per demolition, the need within the city itself is about $83 million. We currently have over 2,600 files in our demolition bureau that have cleared the legal review process, and there are about 600 more that are pending in our law department under review. So in a short period of time, we'll have over 3,200 files that are ready to go, that our staff is ready to process when we have funding available. As far as the amount of money that we normally have for demolition, it has been since 2007 to 2013, anywhere from 6.3 to 11.3 million dollars per year that our staff has had for a demolition budget. And in each of those years, we have not carried over money. We have the capacity to do more demolitions, we're constrained by the funding. So wanted to just bring to your attention, you know, the need within the city, and again, thank you all for considering this ordinance.
Thank you. The next speaker is Councilman Jeff Johnson, City of Cleveland Council.
Wanted to call, come over and discuss an issue that I spoke to you guys briefly about before. This is, now that you're preparing to vote on it, I want to go actually over the ordinance and just have some comments. The, I think it's clear that many of us around the city are fighting for more rehab, rehabilitation money, more money to, particularly in a central city, more money to be able to take these homes and instead of tearing them down and having a vacant lot, actually rehab them. Unfortunately, there's been a momentum, if you want, a bandwagon effect that demolition is the way to go. It is not a very creative housing strategy, it's actually, in my opinion, a surrender, particularly for communities like Collinwood and Glenville that I represent, it is a surrender. Notwithstanding the fact that we still need demolition dollars, we just need a housing policy and housing strategy. It is my hope despite, once you pass this, which I expect you to do, that we actually get together and actually have a housing strategy for this county. There are houses right now within many of our neighborhoods that are empty, that are left abandoned, but are not blighted, and they should not be torn down. I noticed in your criteria that blighted is absent, that all it has to do is be empty and abandoned, and I think that's a mistake. All empty houses in these neighborhoods are not blighted and are not threats, but rather are great subjects of rehabilitation, but there's just not a will to do it. Folks think that particularly my tenure battles at Land Bank is more effective and efficient to use $10,000 to tear down a house, rather than provide money to incentives for the private sector to come and give more investments. Collinwood and Glenville, for example, is not, is a weak market area right now. We need more private incentives. So post this vote, I hope the county can look at trying to help us create incentives for folks to spend their money in these what's so-called nondestination neighborhoods that some folks call us, and help us to get folks in here and rehab these houses. And Glenville, for example, is a historic community. We just cannot replace the houses that the Land Bank has been tearing down, that are not blighted but simply are empty, and they don't want to carry too much further on their books. The one request is that you channel, that you send the money directly to Cleveland City Hall, because our process is that we do condemn houses, we do a little bit more analysis as far as blighting that your Land Bank doesn't do. And I would ask that you also consider that 1 million for the first cycle and no more than 2 million the second cycle be, that we be exceptions to that, given the fact that we are the central city with a disproportionate amount of abandoned houses. So I ask that you consider giving us more money, since we have proven ourselves. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Councilman Zach Reed.
Well, good afternoon, I'm Cleveland City Councilman Zach Reed, and I'm here for the third time to ask that you please reconsider the phrase of demolition on property. What I'm past, what is being passed out to you right now is basically a house on Maryland. It's at 7920 Maryland. The house is solid, the roof is solid, the foundation is solid, and Gus Frango's and the Land Bank Department, since they can't get rid of that house, wants to demolish the house. And this is the problem that my colleague was just saying to you, that if you look at your criteria, it clearly states that the house just needs to be abandoned and vacant. And that's the only thing wrong with this particular house. It's abandoned and it's vacant. It's on a solid street, in a solid community, in the Mill Creek Development Area where Senator Sherrod Brown lives. So there's nothing wrong with the house, there's nothing wrong with the street, there's nothing wrong with the community as a whole. But since the Land Bank can't get rid of the house, they now move forward to demolish the house. They first started with the situation of saying that they wanted $5,000 from the development corporation for the house. Now they've got an aggressive neighbor next door that's now threatening to sue, so now they're saying, we'll sell you the house for a dollar and you still got to give us a $500 cost. So you see the sliding scale that's happening. And my colleagues and I are here today to basically ask for, I'm asking for as low as $5 million, other $50 million to have for rehab. We are all talking about jobs. If you look at the criteria, it's $30,000, basically $32,000 is the highest, these are bids that come from bidders. So for the $10,000 that you can give to this outside, to rehab company, we can bring that cost down to $20,000. And you can see what it takes here. Plumbers means jobs, electricians mean jobs, carpenters mean jobs. I'm here on behalf of these individuals that need jobs. I look around this council, you all know that there are individuals in our communities that have made mistakes. And these individuals could rehab these houses and be back on the doles to be providing taxes. So if you pass this with a $50 million brush that gives them the criteria that says that a house in a good neighborhood on a good street that you can tear down simply because we can't get rid of the house, means that we got a vacant lot, which, as you know, the criteria means that we get all the vacant lots, which means that we have to cut the grass, which means that we have to maintain it. Well, we have individuals in our wards, in our communities, in our neighborhoods, both in the suburbs and in the city, that need jobs. And I gave this to you so you can see, this is not some pie in the sky opportunity here, this is real. These are real quotes. These are real individuals that want jobs. And I'm asking you to please just diversify the language that allows for demolition and rehab. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, the next speaker is Councilman Brian Cummins. We just need to make a few more copies of that handout and we'll pass those out as soon as we're ready.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have, my comments diverge a little bit from my colleagues. I really want to speak on several, several matters, partly related to demos and partly related to potential concerns for rehabs. One thing specifically to get on the record, though, is pertaining to 807.03(c) where it gets into the 1 million to 2 million dollar rounds of funding. As you'd heard from our Building and Housing staffer, director that, Deputy Director, that, you know, Cleveland has managed anywhere from 6.3 to 11.3 million dollars over the previous years. A lot of that, obviously in the high-water mark, was through use of TARP funding, but clearly we're very experienced in demo work, unfortunately, in terms of the housing and financial foreclosure crisis. The point to that, though, is that if we're really going to get at the need of getting properties torn down, particularly because of their benefit of, once we've removed them, property values have been proven to increase and the economic drag has lifted to some degree. degree. If we're going to do that on a timely basis, I would like to get on record that I would recommend that you make some amendment to this in allowing the City of Cleveland, who, which clearly has, I think, in the record, more than fifty percent, a majority of demolition needs, just in terms of pure vacant and blighted structures, that there be some amendment to allow for something higher than a one million first round or a two million subsequent round. I would suggest that in a minimum, we would need probably five million for a first round. I mean, at the low mark, we were doing six million, and we still have a lot of properties to do. Apart from that specific aspect, just to quickly go over a few things, you know, we've been thinking a lot about demo and rehab, and I can just give you a quick slice and glance of what we've done in Ward fourteen on the near west side. The last three and a half years, we initiated an inventory, four years ago, of six hundred properties vacant and abandoned. Of those six hundred, in three and a half years, we ended up demoing three hundred and twenty, rehabbing eighty through the private sector. So, it's about a twenty percent split of demo, eighty percent demo, twenty percent rehab. What's interesting is that we have shown to turn over about a four-to-one leveraging of dollars in terms of our investor properties, which means that our local development corporations have been able to take out a vacancy, which is a lot of work in terms of legal and wrestling with banks and attorneys. But, once we do that, we've sold properties to vetted investors, whose finances and quality of work and tenants have been vetted, and we've been able to sell approximately eighty properties in that time, and got investors to actually rehab to the two to forty, forty to sixty thousand dollars, if you take in the procurement, their purchase and their rehab investment. So, that's, in our case, we've leveraged about three-point-two million dollars of investment. This does get to the issue of rehab monies. I don't think we have time to discuss it further today. I would recommend, based on Chairman Branca Telly of our County Development Committee, that fifty million be used for demo, but I would love to entertain even on a committee basis or working group hosted by you or us at the city, talking more about the necessity to help incentivize and put programs together for rehabs, because I think particularly in the inner suburbs, like Cleveland, we do have at least twenty, it could be more percentage, of what we would call A-to-B or high-ranked properties that could be renovated. It's just that the system to be put in place to manage that requires dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you. Or anyone else? All right, the clerk has read into the record the item, and I believe there is a proposed substitute, so I'm going to call on Mr. Jones for the substitute.
Thank you, Madam President. And we all have in front of us a proposed substitute ordinance, zero-two-zero-one-four-dash-zero-zero-one-four. And this council has been deliberating this concept for several months, and I believe it's time to continue that discussion today. I've been working with several council members, as well as council staff, to coordinate with both the administration and the Land Bank in developing a framework for a viable program. The proposed substitute is intended to codify the core elements of the program into legislation and put in place substantive guidelines for program implementation. This legislation has been a collaborative effort, and I'd like to thank the parties involved for their input, the Executive Director of the Land Bank, Gus Frango's, the administration, their point person has been Nate Kelly and many others, and many of my colleagues here, not just those who are listed as sponsors, but then many other colleagues who have gone into the community, heard the concerns of residents, have worked behind the scenes. And so, we've had a lot of support, and I just want to acknowledge them and their dedication to this legislative process. The administration will be overseeing the program itself, and will be making refinements down the road. And, but at this time, I'd like to invite our council staff to come forward to give us a little more detail about the program, Khalil Saren and Michael King.
Thank you, Councilmen. Thank you, Madam Chair and the whole committee. Just so everyone's aware, this program, of course, as you'll recall, is intended to respond to an urgent need identified by municipalities and stakeholders for strategic demolition of vacant and abandoned structures. We, as council staff, have worked closely with the administration, in particular Nate Kelly and the Land Bank, Gus Frango's and his team, to codify the core elements of the program that's been developed on an ongoing basis. As you recall, the purpose of this program is to engage in aggressive, like demolition, which will act as a catalyst to improve the housing market and promote economic development. This program is intended to take a strategic and targeted approach to demolition while also allowing communities to identify their priorities. So, without further ado, I'm just going to run briefly through sort of what is in the ordinance, how it's structured, and then open up the floor for discussion and questions. The grant program itself will allow municipalities to apply, either on their own or through an authorized agent, for a non-competitive grant program. And how this is going to work is there are, the county will establish a set of criteria to determine whether properties identified in each application are eligible for demolition, and the major factors for eligibility criteria are going to be determined by the Department of Development, but are outlined in the legislation as being major identification of a target area or spot demolition site within a community, a certification that the properties are vacant and abandoned, an identified plan for either redevelopment or maintenance of the property following demolition, capacity to administer the demolition, both either on their own or using a qualified agent such as the Land Bank, and a commitment to exercise the necessary police powers, legal powers, to conduct nuisance abatement or any other legal requirements necessary to do demolition. Grants will be awarded, as I said, on a non-competitive basis, meaning that applications will not be scored against one another, but against the eligibility criteria that are established. Grants will be made in successive rounds, so, you know, everybody's going to get one shot in the first round and then can reapply following that. First-round grants, as written in this legislation, are not to exceed one million dollars, and that's really because we can't quite anticipate what the demand's going to be across the county, and we want to be able to measure what that is. And if it, if after the first round, the Department of Development or the county has a better handle of what the demand's going to be, they can raise grant amounts up to two million dollars in subsequent rounds. No more than ten thousand dollars may go towards demolition of any individual dwelling. This could be either a single-family unit or a multi-unit residential structure, including multiple dwellings. And no more than a hundred thousand dollars may go towards the demolition of any individual structure. Any demolition cost that may be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, up to a hundred thousand dollars can be awarded to demo a structure, but either the municipality will have to cover it themselves or find some other matching dollars. To be eligible for subsequent-round grants, applicants will need to take all of the legal actions necessary to enable demolition of at least eighty percent of the structures previously approved for demolition in the previous round. And really, this is to incentivize the applicants to move expeditiously with these demolition projects, is that sort of the intent of the program. And finally, grants will be approved by the Board of Control unless otherwise referred to council for approval. And again, this is really about making sure things are moved expeditiously and quickly. Applicants will be required to enter into a grant agreement, basically to ensure that they comply with all of the commitments they make in their applications related to nuisance abatement and other legal requirements related to project demolition, and will need to commit to competitively bid demolition projects. And then, finally, the legislation includes a set of reporting requirements. It requires the county to maintain a dashboard of all of the properties and projects requested for demolition, a list of parcels approved for demolition according to the eligibility criteria, and the ongoing status of each project. It also will require, you know, council will be notified of all the applicants who apply in each round, the properties approved for demolition in each round, the properties demolished each round, and the grant amounts awarded to each applicant each round, and a notification of any change in the eligibility criteria. So, that's the basic structure of the legislation before you, the proposed substitute. I don't know if you have anything to add? All right, so, I'll open it up.
Mr. Schron has a question.
No, Mr. Schron does not have a question, sorry. Does fifty million dollars cover the scope of the project, the problem in the county?
As far as we know, no. Fifty million dollars does not cover the entire scope of the problem in the county as it regards vacant, abandoned structures, whether they be blighted or not.
So, you'd agree that the fifty million dollars, based on the numbers we've already heard, is between two-hundred and two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, at least, is just as dart throwing material?
I say, once you get into the multiple hundreds of millions of dollars, you got a wide range, and it's still very expensive. But I don't think that we can pin even necessarily that close a number on the problem, especially considering it's a moving target.
But it's a big, much bigger than the fifty million dollars. Can we all agree to that?
I would say, much bigger than the fifty million dollars, however, based on a swift, impactful push on demolition, we may be able to shrink the gap between the total problem and the amount of impact that we have.
Okay. Swift, and at least I understand the substitute and the language it says, "strategic demolition in bulk." Maybe I'm having, I'm having a hard time understanding how a non-competitive process is strategic.
Well, I think at the county level, and some of the speakers, and in some conversations we've had, we recognize the need for sort of a larger strategy, but we also recognize that a larger county-wide housing strategy or land-use strategy is something that will require a great deal of time and work. And I think that frankly, the vacant, abandoned, and blighted properties that we have in the county right now, maybe, you know, tend to cast a shadow on some of the things that we might otherwise be able to conceive of in terms of a larger housing strategy. So, getting some of the dead wood out of the way will allow us to, you know, see the tree for what it is a little bit better, and if--
How do we know which dead wood to get out of the way if we haven't done a strategy of executing what we're going to do, and how do we do, if we're just taking a pepper shaker and shaking it across at one million dollar increments, how is that strategic?
If we were simply spreading the money as we saw fit here at the county level, I would agree with you. However, part of the design of the program is that the municipalities themselves bring their strategy to the table. It's very similar to the way our current Planning Commission has looked at the master plans of the various municipalities, and they've incorporated them into an ongoing sort of review that is a little bit more comprehensive and county-wide. And so, the way that we have the application process coming from the municipalities and the priorities of each municipality will be in their application, based on the structures that they choose. It will be their strategy that we will be helping them implement.
But these are county dollars. These are not their dollars.
That's correct.
And so, therefore, we might have the best project in the world coming out of a municipality, but it's the worst project for the county, because there might be other projects that would fall in line ahead of that if we were actually in a competitive process. Mr. Miller and I were both on the Clean Ohio Council, where we exactly had this same issue, where the problem of brownfields was every bit as big, if not bigger. We had a finite element, which was the money, and we had a competitive process, and the best rose to the top, and those that were not as good a projects didn't get funded.
Well, I understand your point, and perhaps in another circumstance, I might agree. I think that the benefit of having a non-competitive process in this way is that all of the applications, if they are successful, must have risen to a level that is acceptable under the criteria.
But only within that community?
Well, I mean, within that community of houses. On the other hand, I'm not sure that we necessarily envisioned, and it's not up to us, but, you know, in crafting this, I think we envisioned having the input from the communities themselves as they are closer to their particular issues and strengths and opportunities within their cities.
And I agree with one of the councilmen that spoke, that one million dollars, if we find that a strategic opportunity, for example, right around the brand-new school that's being built at Max Hayes, was a better use, and the money should be five million dollars going in there, this program says that we're not going to strategically identify that as the best use of the funds.
Well, the round structure deliberately is not spelled out in terms of time per round, and I think that that lends itself to a bit of flexibility in terms of how long the rounds take. And so, for instance, if there is a city that wishes to demolish a set of structures that are in a particular area, and perhaps that set of structures is a two-million-dollar total, the first round would be one million dollars, they would apply for that one million dollars, they would, if their application is proper and in accordance with the criteria, would get that one million dollars for demolition of those properties. Once they are done with those properties, they would then reapply second round for that second million dollars and finish the job. And that doesn't, I recognize the worry about how long rounds might take, but that's something that I think we need to have flexibility in, because we've never done this before. And that's another reason for the lower initial round maximum, simply because we don't know exactly how well this program is going to work, and we'd like to be able to fine-tune it as we need to, as it progresses.
What harm would be to have a competitive process and let the best rise to the top, and utilize the public's fifty million dollars if we end up approving this?
I think--
In a competitive process to actually solve problems in a more strategic manner versus a random selection of property throughout the fifty-nine communities that we have in Cuyahoga County.
Of course, and I think one of the difficulties might be who gets to judge the, in terms of this competitive process. And then, secondly, by what criteria do they judge? I think the debates that you would have on those two questions by themselves could last forever.
I stand, I would like to stand corrected on you on this, because we did this exact issue with the Clean Ohio Fund. We did create criteria, we did create a competitive process, and we did have it, and we were awarding money within less than a year. So, and that was monies that the taxpayers voted on, and I'm very concerned about this. Thank you.
Well, certainly--
Madam President, could we, this has been a collaborative effort, and it might be a good opportunity to allow Nate Kelly to actually have some input, if he has something he'd like to add to what he just--
Yeah, and I'd just like to say that, I know we have Mr. and Ms. Conwell, and Mr. Miller, and Mr. Greenspan, and here for Mr. Kelly, that we do have an executive session, and we're not going to take any action on this tonight, so we've got plenty of time to discuss it. So, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to elaborate on what Khalil was saying. I would, I would direct the council, in answering the question to strategy, I'd direct the council to look at the proposed substitute, eight-oh-seven-point-oh-three-B-three. One of the criteria for funding is that the applicant, in this case, the cities, would have to have identified a plan for redevelopment of the property or properties. The vision there, Councilman Schron, is that the city applicant will bring forward a plan to say, "We want to demolish these properties in this area to facilitate the kind of development that you would have talked about that would hasten the development around Max Hayes." We can't divine the strategy for housing in the different neighborhoods and cities because we've got barriers of local control, the cities are the ones that authorize demolition and permitting, et cetera. And so, what, reflecting what the proposal is from council staff, is I see that item as giving us the opportunity to say, in a binary fashion, "Do you have a plan for the redevelopment of these properties? Yes or no?" Which would be in contrast to a pepper sprinkling across a city or a county of demolished properties.
Yes, Ms. Conwell.
I have a couple of questions, real quick. For the first round, because that was my question, how long would the time period be between the rounds? So, in the first round, if all municipalities apply, will they all be taken care of before a second round is initiated?
So, how the rounds are contemplated to work are, as was stated, there are, there is no set time limit in the legislation as to when the rounds are to happen. It's really, I think, a combination of a couple of things. One is how long it takes the county to see, you know, what the demand was in the first round, and how feasible it is to, and what the timeline should be for a second round. If it looks like there's a ton of demand, and that we can anticipate sort of where that's lying, and go out for a second round, we can do it again.
that's, that's lying, and go out for a second round, we can do it again. But another thing that dictates that the, the next round is the, the 80% requirement, that the, that the applicants need to take all actions necessary to enable demolition of 80% of the properties approved in the, in the prior round. So really, in that sense, it's up to the applicants to, to make sure they, because really, the, the purpose of that provision-
On that point, when you talk about demonstrate 80%,
Yeah.
Does that mean 80% of funding?
No, 80% of the properties, or identified in their previous grant application, need to be basically ready to go, shovel-ready for demolition, in order for them to apply for more funding. And, and the purpose behind that is to incentivize applicants to really move ahead with the, the demolition, because we're talking about strategic bulk, bulk demolition in a, in a prompt and expedient manner.
Doesn't necessarily mean that that municipality has to have some funding to go along with it?
I'm sorry, I don't, I, I'm not sure exactly what you're trying to say.
President, in light of East Cleveland, you know, they don't, they need a lot of demolition, but they don't have any funding. So this, this program is not requiring that?
No, no, this, this program would-
Initial cost or anything?
Correct, no, this isn't-
Okay, my next question will be, how would this be an open and transparent process? Are we going to put this on a website? Who wins what bids and are competitive? How are you going to do that?
Well, ultimately, that's up to the Department of Development in terms of how to advertise applicants, but we are talking about only basically 59 applicants, because municipalities are the, are the eligible applicants. So I'm sure many of them are already aware of, of this program, and, and I'm sure we can educate those that aren't. But ultimately, it is going to be open and transparent. The applications will be received, they'll be all public record, and then the demolition projects themselves are all going to be competitively bid. So, in, in that sense, it, it is a very open and transparent-
And they're not necessarily geared to get a million dollars. Because you talked about price, $10,000 per home, maybe up to $100,000. So I'm thinking if, if all 59 municipalities say, "Hey, we, we need a million to take care of our blight," not enough money right there. So, what is the process to say, "Okay, only 50 of you can have it out of the nine"?
Sure. Well, we, we, part of it is we, we can't fully anticipate what the demand's going to be, but we do anticipate that not all 59 municipalities are going to need a million dollars in the first round. I think there are a number of municipalities out there that are going to need significantly less than that, and I, I think that's, from the conversations we've had with the administration and the land bank, I think that's, that's borne out by the facts.
Last question, commercial property, was this included in that?
Commercial properties are eligible for demolition in the legislation as it's currently drafted. It's, it falls under site demolition primarily, but the, the concept being that we, we have a hard cap on how much demolition can go to any individual structure, so that, you know, if there is a large commercial structure that could cost upwards of double-digit millions of dollars to demolish, you know, the, this particular fund isn't going to get sucked into one or two incredibly large projects. It's really meant to, to be flexible in the sense of, we'll put up the first $100,000, and if it costs more, then the municipality needs to find the, the money for that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Miller and Mr. Greenspan, but we need, it's around 4:30, we need to be mindful of our time. We do have to have an executive session, which will take about 15 minutes. Mr. Germana wants to go on the list here.
Madam President, and, and my colleagues, I want to reiterate my strong belief that, that this program, that there needs to be an overall housing strategy along with this program. And I know that, that, that there has been discussion about creating some language to that effect to be incorporated into this legislation, so I want to say that I strongly support that. Second thing is that, that Michael talked about this program being a catalyst to improve the housing market, but, but there is nothing in the criteria where we, where we try to assess that capability, and, and I believe there's going to be some areas where we're demolishing a modest number of structures, is just not going to be enough to, to catalyze the housing market. And if, and if we have limited resources, I think it's important to really hone in on, on where we can create a dynamic effect and, and improve the housing market so that we do reduce the overall backlog of what needs to be done. And, final thing that I want to say is that, that a couple of weeks ago, in the Finance and Budget Committee, we had the administration present a two-year plan on debt capacity, and, and even though our consultant, Brad Squires, said that $150 million in additional new debt at this time might be kind of a prudent amount, the proposal we heard was for $189 million over the next two years, with an additional $50 million in 2018 for projects that have not been identified. And so, so I just want everybody to know that we're pushing it. And, and the reason why I'm supporting this program, even though we're pushing it, is that I know that over the county's history, there's, there's times where, where a lot of positive things have been, have happened, and we've been able to make a lot of progress, and, and there's been other times where, where things have been slow. And, and right now is one of those times when a lot of very positive things are, are happening, and, and so, so I don't want to get in the way of that momentum, but I, I think we do have to, to be cautious and, and try to find ways where we can prioritize expenditures and, and see if maybe some things can be funded out of current resources rather than debt, and, and we have to keep this whole concept of debt capacity in, in mind as we proceed, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greenspan, quickly.
Thank you. Yeah, I, my district is not a district that, that has a significant amount of blighted property, but it doesn't mean that I, I'm not compassionate towards the issue. Mr. Jones and I, a few years ago, did a district swap, and I was exposed to, to issues in his district. Mr. Noni and I have done ride-alongs with our Sheriff's Department in some parts of our county that are very challenged, so I understand the scope of the issue. My challenge with this, my colleagues have in front of them, a proposal that I'll be bringing forward, but I want to at least present it. We can discuss it at future dates, some I've already spoken to about this. I, I have a problem with the granting, with the grant concept, and would, and will be proposing a substitute to change the grants to no-interest loans to the cities. Not talking about adjusting the criteria here, just the funding mechanism. And here's how this would work. So at the time that each city would, would receive $100,000 or a million, whatever the criteria, however it ultimately is determined, at that time, a property valuation total will be, will be identified for a city. So if a city has, example, receives $1 million a year from property tax collections, that will be the base. And as this money is loaned against, or to these cities, over the course of the term of the bond, if it's 15, 20, 25 years, whatever it is, will be the course, will be the term of this loan, and the loan we repay, repaid back to the county based on the property appreciation, property tax appreciation above that stated amount. So if it's $1 million, half of what comes in above that, we paid against the debt of the, of the city, of the municipality. That way, the county has an opportunity to pay back the debt to which it's borrowing. The city also will share in the benefit of increased property value, because the commitment would only be for half of the amount of, of the outstanding balance in that one particular year. If at the end of the term of the debt, the, the bond, there is, there's money outstanding from the city, then it will become forgivable to the city. So there's no ultimate exposure to the city for the debt capacity. The county would then bear the responsibility of that. Once again, it's no interest, it's, it's no interest and the principal repayment only, and I'll be working with staff to, to bring forward legislation. I've already mentioned this to a few, a few of you, and I'd like to have additional conversations, but I'm challenged with the granting prospect, but I am satisfied with the loan, a loan concept only to the extent that property valuations increase in each of the, in, in the community to which the loan is offered. So I present that, and we'll be looking forward to discussing it with each of my colleagues individually, but I throw that concept up as an alternative to the funding mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenspan. Mr. Germana?
Let, let me go on record as saying that I'm, I'm for doing something for this problem. Let me also say that I'm a no, definitely, on, on this proposal, but I want to be a yes. I, I absolutely do not like this million-dollar rounds. I, I think we got to do things that are proportional, and there should be, that we're scoring properties and we're getting the worst, the ones that can't be redeveloped, like some of these council people have talked about. Let me just give you a little example. In, in the city of Parma, there is nine wards, and if we're going to have a paving program and every, every ward gets so much feed, how is that reasonable? It's not. It should be the worst street gets fixed, then the next worst street, and so on and so forth. If, if we were giving out food in million-dollar amounts, some cities would be giving people that don't need food just to get rid of the million dollars, and you're going to have other cities that have starving people. So, I think this has got to be proportional, and there's got to be, like Councilman Schran said, there's got to be some rating. Let's make sure that we're getting the worst of the worst. If Lindo, Lindale gets a million dollars versus Cleveland, it doesn't make any sense. Yeah, goodbye, Lindale. Yeah, I guess, you know, from my viewpoint, if, if you use the food, the, the real starving, the worst of the worst, it's got to be proportional, and, and just like the councilman from Cleveland said, their need is, is great. How can it, how can you say, "Cleveland, here's a million," and any other city, the same? Thanks.
Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm clearly supportive of this ordinance. I do want something referencing a housing plan in here. It might just be a brief, small paragraph, but the Planning Commission is hopefully on task to provide us a five-year plan with more strategic targeting of prime areas and how we can maximize demo and/or if there's a percentage of rehab. But I believe there's a crisis, and we're bleeding right now in this county, and I don't think we have time for this five-year plan. I think we have to act now in conjunction with the plan in process. It's a triage, I see it, that we need to move forward with this, this ordinance as it is. In terms of having a scoring, we, we are not in a position at the county to score each individual community's needs, and how bad a particular area or houses may be cataclysmically bad to a small community, but not so bad for, for another community. Everything is relative, and, and the demo of a, a particular area in the county might have huge impact in that area, but that particular house might not be as bad, bad of a house in Cleveland or East Cleveland, but in Westlake, for example, there could be a bad house that could be influencing the entire neighborhood and bringing those values down. So I think that's why this is a good piece, because it gives the flexibility of those communities to decide, "How is this impacting us?", and we still have criteria that needs to be met. So, there is criteria, but we can't sit here and decide, for Euclid, for example, what's good for them necessarily and how this will impact their, their neighborhoods. A small amount of demos could go a long way in South Euclid or Euclid, and even Westlake or Strongsville, if there's a bad area that needs to be enhanced. So I don't think we can score in a way we, we do otherwise. Those are my statements. I hope we can get some reference to a plan. I think we do need a long-term strategic housing plan in conjunction.
Okay. We need to vote on the substitution, so, Mr. Jones, you're moving the substitution. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Who's seconded, I don't know? Conwell and Norby, we had two seconds. All right, any discussion on the proposed substitute? So all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, then we'll move forward on the substitute, and I'm going to leave the substitute in the committee of the whole, and we will be setting another meeting for committee of the whole, so everyone will have an opportunity to go over these details. I really appreciate the input. There's been some excellent suggestions here, and we've just got to work out, work out the details. All right, item five is a executive session. All meetings of Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the Ohio Means Law. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During executive session, council confers outside the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matter in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This afternoon, council will go into executive session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement with International Union, United Auto Worker, Automobile, Aerospace, and Agricultural Implement Workers of America, UAW Region 2B Local 70. We will be going into the committee room, so there will be no live stream, and we'll come back when we are finished with our executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining matters?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gallagher and seconded by Mr. Hairston. Please call the roll.
Moving to executive session, Mr. Schran.
You don't have to leave.
Yeah.
Ms. Conwell?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll go into the executive, I mean, into the executive session in the committee room.
And everyone should-